No, but, but, but I, I do understand, you know, the fact that ten days may be too short of our notice.
It is too short.
We can go with the thirty days, that's not the issue. Our problem is the appellant has to pay the fee.
Yeah, and then tha- tha- and then that's when it bec- so how do we even implement that as staff? So now, I'm, I'm gonna call Mister, eh, each who applies, say, you know, or your neighbor has just applied, so now you have to come back if you really want that variance and pay the two hundred and sixty-two to take this to the Board of Adjustment.
But why does Kenny have to pay?
Well, that's what he's saying.
Does the neighbor get a free objection before, is that, you, you said?
I mean, because what if the neighbor-
The first time around when the, the application for the variance is submitted, are the neighbors then notified prior to the release of the administrat- the approval?
Yes, yes. I mean, that's what, the code doesn't, is not written this way, but thi- as a best practice, that's what we-
Okay.
The department been doing, to wait that ten day. If we, they do receive an objection, then they, we don't approve it.
I do think the neighbor should get a free bite of the app.
They, they should, so then that's really the problem. That should be written into the code. We should, that should be, a notification should be given to the neighbor so that you as staff can make the best decision and take all these considerations.
No, no, we've, we've been doing that in practice, but-
And that'll lower the appeal.
In, 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 in the code, it's not specif- specified.
See, are we talking about an objection, or are we talking about an appeal?
No, no, what I, what I was saying, let's say in the right now, eh, before this amendment, if we send the letters out before we made our, eh, we went to our final decision, somebody or neighbors comes and object to the variance, we will not approve it. So then as you know, our neighbor has no appeal, eh, objected to the variance, you're gonna have to take that to the Board of Adjustment.
And at that point, the owner has to pay the fee.
I mean, eh, has to pay the extra, eh, to, cause you know, eh, we have to give him credit for the, the fee that he already paid. And then, you know, whatever extras to, to note, to put up, eh, the public notices, the, the signs, then he has to pay for that and take it to the Board of Adjustment.
Adjustment.
I, I wanna, I wanna, you saying about the neighbors and, and that the applicant should pay for. I remember an incident a few years back when Lexus came to town. Okay, on Biscayne Boulevard, and they wanted to put a sign facing the boulevard, and I, we could've granted them an administrative variance. However, they brought it before the council, just to notify, eh, as a courtesy, let the council know what was going on. And there are individuals who lived in the residential area a couple of miles away. Now, I don't think that's right, they shouldn't, I mean, and this is a business district. Now, let's just kinda change the, the, the play in here. Say you granted that administrative variance, and all of a sudden, somebody from two miles away didn't like that sign that Lexus just put up, or had gra- yet you granted that administrative var- now Lexus has to pay again. Now, I don't, I don't, that's not right, I don't see that, that, that's just doesn't, it doesn't mesh. If my neighbor doesn't like me, and there are neighbors that don't like each other, and you sent out the proper notices, everybody had thirty days from, from which to review, they come before you and they say to you, hey, we don't like this guy, all right, then you send it up to the full Board of Adjustment. But if you, eh, you don't hear anything back, and all of a sudden, eh, within the twenty-ninth day, my neighbor goes over to you guys and says, hey, I'm gonna file an appeal because he doesn't like me, and I'm getting screwed again to pay another two hundred and sixty something bucks. And, and to me, that's just, eh, it should be on the appel, on the person filing the appeal. I, I don't-
Yeah, the person who makes the complaint should be obligated to pay the fee.
Is, provided they were given the first chance-
Correct.
To object-
Exactly.
To public here, to a public notice on it.
And you could put that in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just to go out and say, no, I don't want it, I'm gonna screw you, I don't-
You notify the next door neighbors. How would that language look like, what, what he just said, where, how would that change this?
Well, we, we would have to, um, incorporate it. Um, i- it's, it's, it appears to be a standard operating policy, but I prefer to see it in the code, because standard operating policies may or may not be followed by subsequent administrations.
Correct.
So, if it's in the code, eh, then any amendments to that would require all this review.
Okay.
Much like we're doing now.
Eh, and then, some municipalities go as far, if you're applying for administrative variance, instead of, they, they have you go to your neighbors and get signatures. I'm, I mean, and if you can't get, you know, the, the owner on record, then you have to go to, to a public hearing.
And that's a good move, I think that's, that's a wise move.
Yeah, that's a lot, yeah, I think that's, eh-
I mean, so now, so to neighbors, you know, ahead of time, know what's gonna happen in the property next door.
They're hearing it from the person applying.
Yeah.
Now, let's say, it seems that we all have a issue.
Dade County does that correct, because I've seen it-
Exactly.
I think the city of Miami also.
The county is right across the street from me, somebody wanted to change, and even though I live in North Miami, I still got notified and had to sign, sign off that I, I either agreed to it or not. So, eh, the county does do it.
And the option would be to go straight to the Board of Adjustment and just get a variance, because-
Exactly.
There is a quasi judicial proceeding which has to be advertised, the mailing is now five hundred feet radius of the property.
That's a bunch of people.
We, I, I don't wanna beat it to death, but the reason that we have an administrative variance is for common sense purposes, small things, small things.
Twenty percent.
And, 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 all I'm saying in there is, you know, you notify the, the surrounding neighborhood, or notify the surrounding neighbors, and the appellate, eh, whoever wants to appeal it, let them pay the vig.
Or, or, or we can even go as far, you know, have them put a sign on the property.
They should put a s- that's right, that's all.
Or, or post, post the property.
Years ago, when, when I undertook the renovation of my house, it seems to me, I was required to notify my ne- my neighbors on each side-
Yeah.
And get some kind of approval in order to build off the back of the house. Now, I wasn't requesting variances, because it just fit the little plot of land. At least as far as I remember, there were no variances for that project. But hypothetical, let's say, I, I, at some point, I suddenly have money burning a hole through my pocket. And, and let's just say, for the, for the sake of argument, that I decide, you know, I'd like to put a, 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 I'd like to take off the roof trusses, put in a new concrete slab for a roof, and build a second floor off the back half of the house. So, of course, since it would be off the back half of the house, that wouldn't really upset the avenue appearance at all, but I need a variance on height, because-
Over thirty-five.
You know, I, I, thirty-five feet maybe wouldn't cut it, because you, you put a concrete slab, a second tie beam, and you, you reinforce the flooring, and then you wanna build up, and you need to have a step up for that second floor addition, cause you don't want that to flood out in a heavy rain. And then, you don't wanna put in an eight-foot sweatbox, because you need to air condition this. And you don't wanna put a conical roof on it, because you wanna have the flexibility to someday put in solar panels. If we're ever allowed to buy solar panels, then put them in down here, you know. So, thirty-five feet doesn't cut it, maybe I've gotta wind up going thirty-seven and a half feet. I don't know what the variance would be allowed for administration, but for the sake of the record, let's just say, I can get an administrative variance for a foot and a half, because by the time I build up the second floor, and then I make the, the little eight-foot room a nine-foot room, and then I have to have room up there for the solar panels on top, well now, you know, I'm at, eh, thirty-seven and a half feet. So, the neighbor on the right, you know, eh, no problem, you can afford solar panels, God love you, go put them in. And the neighbor on the left says, ah, no problem, you can put your solar, you could have all that, I, I don't care. You know, and then, the, the, the neighbor on the east side complains that the second story is gonna cast a shadow over their future swimming pool if they ever choose to build a swimming pool. Sort of like what the Eden Rock has had with the Fountain Blue Hotel for all these years, you see, and then, and then the person across the street says, well, I'm not gonna see that second story, cause the oak trees are in the way, but I just don't like second-story homes. So, you know, I object. Well now, who pays for what? I'm obviously paying you two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, just because there's-
A two-foot.
Yeah. So, and then you go ahead and you say, well, you know, Kevin, that's within reason, you can have your extra foot and a half, or two and a half feet, whatever that is. And, and then the person behind me says, oh, well, that's gonna cast a shadow on my yard from the western sun, and I might put a swimming pool there. And the person across the street says, well, I don't like two-story houses. So, who pays?
Right now, you, I mean, we did text amendment, you have to pay.
But why should I have to pay what I've already paid?
Cause you're flush with cash in this example, and-
Ah, well, sure, flush with cash, but is that the point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the person who objects to the, to the variance is the one that ha- should have the economic responsibility of fronting the money. You, you don't like it, put your money up.
That could be up for, that could be up for discussion.
The person that benefits from the variance has some burden on this.
But you see, you'd have nothing to object to until they grant the variance, cause if they don't grant it, then it's, it's never happened.
So then we go back to the public, to the notice of the neighbors-
That's right.
And give them thirty days to object.
And that begs the rule, what is the notice requirement, or what should it be? Is it just the one on each side, or is it everybody within a hundred-foot radius of the property boundary?
No, what, what we do, eh, let, let's say, we project in all the property lines until they touch every single property. Whichever properties, you know, are within, eh, touch, eh, eh, eh-
Oh, so I only have to, have to bribe three neighbors, and I'm okay?
No, no, it, it, it could be four to five.
Four to five.
Yeah, or depends on how your lot is shaped.
Yes, yes, that's true.
So, on, on, on each side, and across the street, but now if your property sits, you know, kind of straddled, you know, two houses on the, the floor, then you have to notify those two neighbors also.
Well, it doesn't straddle them, there's a, there are two swales and an avenue between me and the ones across the street.
No, no, but, but you still have to, eh, cause-
So I'd have to notify-
Yeah.
The ones across the street. Now, is it the one directly across, or do I have to then go to his neighbors too?
No, no, directly across the street.
The one directly across from me. They're a very nice retired couple, they're not gonna give me any problems. Okay, I just wanna raise the question, you see, of, of how this, this pans out, because to me, the objector is the one that ought to pay the fee.
Can it be whoever loses the appeal pay the fee?
No, the, I mean-
Yeah, that would it may-
Like, if you appeal-
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there, is the, when you appeal, is that, is that an actual process, or is it-
Yeah, you have to, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
The fee is due when the service is rendered.
Not when the application, when you, when you notice is filed.
Yes.
Oh, you have to pay up there.
That's when you pay. Well, see, I, the thing that I wanna know is, how do we define in the code the neighbors to be notified when you're gonna apply for this variance? I think that is really the key to this whole thing.
Yeah, to determine who the aggrieved parties are.
You see.
And when they're notified.
Cause if they agree, and you have a standard declaration form, or acknowledgement, or a waiver of objection, or whatever, if they all sign off on it, then-
Then you take it to the Board of Adjustment.
See, but why would you take it to the Board of Adjustment if the immediate neighbors didn't have an objection?
No, if they don't, but let's say they, they do have an objection, then we take it to the-
So, four out of five are happy and one is not.
Then it goes a boy, oh, eh.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's still, you know, allow the neighbors who have some sort of input in what's happening in this neighborhood. But, but in, in our technique, this would be a, an ideal solution. If we notify them ahead of time, and now you got somebody who come in and object to granting of that variance, then we call the applicant, and I say, you know, one of the neighbors, you know, we cannot approve it, then you have to take it to the Board of Adjustment. Then we would schedule, then it become a full public hearing.
Can we, can we remove the, the text where it talks about shifting the cost to the owner, and then work on getting, locking down our LDR where it talks about how we notify the neighbors separately?
Eh, I mean, yeah, that we have to change.
Cause then that'll, that'll notify the neighbor up front, which is what Bob was saying, ahead of time, before you make your staff recommendation.
Yeah, this, this, this is not a crisis ordinance that has to run to City Council in a week. This is something you could work it a little bit and bring it back to us, and we could go with it.
Well, I think it's two separate matters.
Can we not move on this, and?
It's, it's, it's up to you. Um, give us some direction, and we can bring back a draft, eh, it would be August fourth.
All right, I like Jason's suggestion offhand, I think that makes good sense. Bring us the LDRs to tell us how you're gonna notify the neighbors, and, and what kind of form they're gonna use to waive their objection. And what was the other thing you're gonna delete?
Just delete the text after the, eh, the word thirty days, all the way up to providing for repeal. Just delete that whole section where it talks about the cost.
So, and to, to avoid any neighbors, you know, not receiving or mail, maybe have the applicant post the property.
I mean, whatever, whatever, you know, you think is, is bad.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, cause that, you know, nobody would miss that.
And that's, that's how it's down now, eh, for regular variances.
Yeah, but then they'll all say they didn't see the posting, so I, I, I think-
Oh, yeah, even if they say they didn't see the posting, I mean, is, as long as we put, we, we provide them the opportunity so they can-
I mean, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we can't make them see the posting, but I mean, if it's as clear as day and they just choose to ignore it, then I don't think that-
What was the, the, what was the, eh, what, what generated this ordinance? Oh, yeah, but I mean, what, what, so he had complaints? Okay, is any specific, eh, complaints, or, or just in general?
I mean, basically, they were the same arguments, and they should-
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, the only thing I, I have a problem with is that the person complaining, if you gave the administrative variance, or whomever, he should, that person should pay the, the fee. That's the only thing that I have a problem with.
Can we remove the text in this one, and then we do the LDR thing later?
And if I may say, and codify the, the fact that you're gonna notify everybody else. You codify it.
Yeah, I think there's gotta be that two-edged sword, you, you've gotta get the parties noticed, and put the burden on the objector.
Or, would you, I mean-
But are we saying it's a two-part thing? Are you saying that, that, there's, first, there's a notice to the neighbors?
Yeah, because in the LDRs, there has to be an explanation of who you notice and how.
So you notice the neighbors, and if I object to his variance, that's fine, it's not a, it's not an appeal.
Right, that's just a, a notice, and it clarifies where we're going.
I just object, and if the thirty-day period goes by, he gets the variance.
It wouldn't even-
Or whatever the appeal prob- whatever the time is, right?
After the variance. Okay, so, if you, the way it is, and it's, correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna be given time as a neighbor to object, ahead of time, to, to what, and give it to staff, before they make, before they render their administrative variance. So they, once you object, they're no longer gonna go ahead and approve.
It'll just go to the Board of Adjustment.
It'll just go to Board of Adjustment, therefore, you wouldn't even end up in a situation of an appeal process, cause they're, they would've heard what you said.
And the two sixty-two fifty would cover the filing of the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah.
So then-
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
So that's okay, cause the applicant's gotta pay a reasonable fee for this.
You know, you are an absolute genius, that, you clarified that for me very good.
No, even better than I did.
You see?
So then we can, then we should, I got one thing, right? So we can, can we, is everyone okay with just deleting the text where we talk about the applicant to push this forward?
All right, so-
And approve it?
Providing staff can bring us the LDRs that are modified.
Correct.
All right, let me see where you're, where you're drawing your line.
After the word thirty days?
Thirty days, that should be a period.
That should be a period.
Okay, and then we delete, and to shift the cost-
Yeah.
Of such an appeal to the owner of the property seeking the benefits-
Mm-hmm.
Derived by the issuance of an administrative variance.
Oh, that should come off, except for you saying-
I, that's what I'm proposing.
I don't think it's, that's-
See, because I understand what you're saying, and since it would go then directly to the Board of Adjustment, you paid the fee.
Exactly.
So regardless, it's-
That's right, the goal is to avoid the appellate process, in that sense of the word, it's messy, it's expensive. The goal of ordinances and city regulations should be to encourage neighbors to work together. And so you encourage them by putting in the LDRs, this process of notification, and giving them a waiver to sign, indicating that they approve of the request. And then, if someone does not approve, say you don't like the fact I'm putting up a two-story addition, well then automatically, it'll bounce to the Board of Adjustment, there'll be no appeal, it'll go straight to them.
By, since you said that, this was all going to be put under the section entitled Appeals.
Right, and it, it's not gonna be, our goal is to avoid the appeal to begin with.
So this goes someplace else.
Right.
Well, that would go under the section three, six, or four. I'm, on the administrative variance.
Correct.
We're only gonna amend that section.
Correct.
So now, it's only an administrative variance issue that gets addressed.
And, but, but we, but we still are defining now that allotted amount of time.
Yeah, the thirty days, we're fine with.
Oh, the thirty days.
That makes good sense, you know, that, that's reasonable.
That's usually, um, in pretty much all the judicial, eh, proceedings, usually the time allotted for an appeal.
Thirty days?
Okay, so if I have, if I have tons of money that's burning a hole in my pocket, I'll, I'll, I'll let you all know.
But, eh, eh, again, eh, that thirty days, eh, is also the period of time that the property owner has to wait as a cool-off period before commencing the project, otherwise, he or she risks-
Should be codified, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, 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 but, but-
It's already there.
No, but, but even to, to that point, cause remember, eh, most of the time, those administrative variance starts at the building department. A staff reviews a permit, they say, you don't mean the setback on this side, that requires a variance. Oh, yeah, because it's only twenty percent of the setbacks, so, or, or less, that would be an administrative variance. So that's when, cause we won't even want that risk of the applicant commencing work, cause that billing permit has to be signed off by zoning. So, we wouldn't even get to that point. So those thirty, once it's approved, eh, after those thirty days, then that billing permit will be signed off. And then, then maybe other disciplines may review it, cause maybe we're pending zoning approvals, may we view that application, that permit. And then, and only then, they can commence work.
Yeah, cause our goal is to avoid the appellate process to begin with. It's messy, it's expensive, and so what we need to do is codify the means of notifying the neighbors. Do we understand that?
I, you?
Yes.
Can you bring us back the language to do that next month?
Yes.
For the LDRs?
Through the LDRs, and have that as an, as an advertised agenda item, so that we know that that gets done with this, and we're, we're happy? So now, I need to ask you, eh, really to the, to our city attorney, is it appropriate to approve this amendment, or to take, at this point, table it until we see the LDRs to go with it?
I think table it.
I think we should table it, just in case we think of, I'm sorry, you didn't, you asked the city attorney.
Your opinion, sir.
Well, given, given that you have substantially modified-
Yes, we have.
Um, I, I really would like to best articulate what your ultimate decision is.
Well, the, the pref- I think the preference here is to not force us into an appellate process. And instead, to force us into a scenario where you need, where you have time to notify your neighbors and get them to sign a waiver of objection.
Well, you can send this to city council with those recommendations.
Okay.
So it'll move forward from, from this evening, you're, you, you're allowed to, eh, approve with conditions, so to speak.
And, and as amended.
Right now.
As amended. In other words, if we amend this as-
I will include those amendments to go to council, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, eh, eh, actually, I would have, I'll be bound to show both, eh, this, this version, and, and your recommendation.
All right.
Which may entail striking certain language from this version. So, you could still approve tonight and dispose of the item, but memorializing all the amendments that you have desired to go for consideration to council.
Because it's really a two-step thing, we not only wanna change the ordinances presented, we also want the land development regulations to specify how the neighbors are contacted, and, and how they indicate that they're waiving their objection. That's very important, because once they've done that, then we've, we've eliminated this entire appeal operation, and we've set up a system for it streamlined, and go straight to Board of Adjustment, if there is an objection. And if there's no objection from contiguous neighbors, and I think that would be the word, is that right, contiguous neighbors? Then, the process, you know, do you say contiguous or adjoining neighbors?
And, and the other, the other, the other way that it could, eh, go to the Board of Adjustment is, in fact, by the property owner's denial. The, the department denies the administrative-
Well, if that happens, that's different.
Whether or not there's input from the contiguous neighbors, so, um, you know, so they, they still have the, um-
It's just the-
The right to appeal, the decision, if the, that decision is not favorable to them.
Well, that's true, that, this doesn't have anything to do with the property owner's rights to appeal if he gets an unfavorable ruling.
Exactly.
I mean-
This is all predicated on the presumption of a favorable ruling.
Yeah, cause eh, eh, even when you read, um, three, seven, or two, it doesn't simply apply to just administrative variance. It's any administrative decision, any decision rendered by the department. It could be a site plan approval, it could be a DRC, it could be even a, a zoning determination letter that we made, eh-
Well, see-
Any di- admin decision rendered.
Yeah, we're thinking of this as it might impact on a, a single-family property owner.
Yeah, so-
You know, or a, a small-
Same site plan, this would be the same thing?
Yeah.
So in other words, we have a large development going up, and somebody objects to that, the developer has to fork over those eight?
Yeah, cause eh, cause three, seven, or two, really, that's eh, encompasses eh, any decision rendered by the manager of community planning and development.
Any decision.
Any administrative decision rendered.
So in other words, you within the spectrum of the zoning, the height, the density, you come down with a pla- if somebody wants to come in and develop something, somebody can appeal that.
Yeah, I mean, eh, let's say, you know, no, no-
I'm on.
I'm on.
No, no, le- le- let's say you, you, you apply for a si- a site plan review. I mean, site plan, you mean, you don't need any variances. I mean, eh, we, we find that to be fine, you know, meaning the objective policies, and, eh, goal of, of, of the complaint, everything is fine, we have in order department review it. So now we decide to approve that site plan, so, and then somebody can appeal that, cause it's an administrative decision.
But site plans are usually very different.
No, but, but, no, but I'm just m- making the case that, you know, seven, or two is wide encompassing, it just, you know, eh, deals with, eh, the administrative variance.
So, to me, what you just said makes it even more important as to why I think that needs to be stricken from here, because there's just, maybe there's just peo- there are people who are, eh, obstructive, who just don't like anything, and they, they now can just-
That's right.
You know, by doing this, just, just to, you know, be who they are, they can just go maliciously. Try to slow down, eh, the process of somebody from an administrative decision that you guys made by filing an appeal, and then make them bear the burden of the application.
Cause if you read it, two, seven, or two, that's what it say, it don't say variance, any.
It's the administrative, I got it.
All right, so then, let's try to deal with this, then, we've got the, the, Jason's recommendation to strike the language, and this would be a recommendation, we recommend striking the language from the word "and" to the word "variance."
So, I'm sorry, which, which section are you on?
After thirty days, you know, from the title of the ordinance.
From the current ten days to thirty days, period. And the rest of the sentence, and to shift the cost of such an appeal to the owner, blah, 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 that's all stricken, that's our recommendation that we strike that. And in conjunction with this, we recommend that the land development regulations be modified-
Be amended.
To specify the method of notification of all contiguous or adjoining residences or property owners, and specify the, the essential structure of the waiver that they would sign off, indicating they have no objection to this. And the goal of this is to avoid the expensive appeal process, and to streamline the decision-making, so that if there is an objection, we know, all right, immediately it goes to Board of Adjustment, if there's none, staff handles it and it's done with. The appeals process is, tends to be negative, it, eh, tends to be antagonistic. Divisive, and we wanna try and avoid that. That's why we're proposing it this way.
Now, a question to, eh, to Mister Galdos. You, you mentioned something that I, eh, could be problematic, you said that you would have to send the council the wording as we got it tonight, and then also the amendment, amended wording that we are suggesting, or can we just send the city council our changes only? In other words, what we, if we vote on passing this over to the city council, we are, eh, we're sending them the modif- modification, period, end of discussion. That's all they need, need to see, correct? Text-wise?
No, eh, I, you, you as an advisory board, this is what the proposed ordinance is, and, um, you advise the mayor and city council as to what you wanna change on this proposed ordinance. So, it would basically bear your input.
Okay.
And, and I will have to formulate, um-
And, and they could-
On one hand, preserve, preserve this as, as a, an alternative for the city man-
And in theory, they could, they could say, no, we don't like it, and, so therefore, I would be inclined, eh, to table this until we get-
The LDR is figured out?
An LDR figured out.
Cause then that would be, you're saying that you think that'll, that'll clarify what our ultimate intent is?
Well, I, I'm not sure, if, if we table it, and we bring back the language written as to what we specified, then we would avoid having this piece of-
And it goes together as a package.
It would go together as a package.
I understand we're char- I understand where Charlie is coming from, we, we want the council to be aware that we recommended this and we're proposing the LDRs to, to address the issue, so that you look at it as two pieces of the puzzle.
That's what yours is.
You know, that, it's doable, and, um, we could propose, um, you know, this version and your version.
Okay.
Eh, eh, as a packet.
Yeah, as long as the LDRs go with it.
Right, yeah, this is.
Yes, you, you persist the LDRs, yeah.
Would not give the council a completed picture of our thoughts on this. And so I can accept Charlie's, uh, motion, if he wants to make it, to table this in order to get the LDR draft in here, and then we say, okay, we wanna change it because we want this to go with it.
Yeah, because you concur with really a large portion of the ordinance, you, I, I feel like you're, you're concurring with, you know, the, the length of time, and eh, 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 you know, the, the notice, I think it's the shifting of the, uh, the cost that bothers you.
Right.
And also, you know, uh, well, who pays and what kind of notice is going to be given to contiguous, but other than that.
That's the important thing, regardless, to avoid the appellate process, if we can avoid that.
Since this was a, since this was a, a, amendment by one particular council member, um, who I respect and admire, by the way, um, would it, would it be helpful that if staff conferred with them with, with what we, we have discussed in, in order, perhaps, since we're going to table this, and I think it's pretty much a given here with the majority of the council, that he restructured this to what we are recommending, and then.
Or that might even be premature until we get the LDRs.
Right, right, until we get the LDRs, let us get the LDRs drafted, and then we can.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, presenting a, um, your version of the LDRs would offer the mayor and city council, uh, a, a basis to compare with.
Alright.
Because, you know what, you may end up with both, a combination of both.
Right.
Or something else completely different, that's also a possibility.
Okay, so I, I make a motion, we table this item, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item tabled, and we all understand why, and hopefully, members of the council will appreciate the thought we're giving to this, and we expect staff to, we would ask staff to please try to bring us back the LDRs next month that are modified along with this, and if the, uh, deputy city attorney could please prepare a, a, a revision that we can tack on to those revised LDRs, so that we take a look at our picture and what councilman Galvin proposed.
It's just a point of clarification, it's, uh.
Yeah, city attorney.
Uh, no, interim.
Interim.
Interim city attorney.
Interim city.
Alright, interim, yes, aye.
Um, if you're, if you're okay with, um, I, I'm, I'm proposing to organize this in the following manner, for example, thirty seven, oh, two, I can leave it, I, I'll leave one version as this, and then I will, below that, show your version of the same section. So you're looking at the, at both versions, right? This one and then the one you're proposing, so you know exactly which, what language it is that you're changing.
Yeah.
That would be a better way of presenting it.
Yes, right.
And, um, and moving forward that way, cause otherwise this could end up kinda messy.
Yes, it would.
Cause I have to take the, the, the current, the way it's written right now and make amendments to the, to those provisions.
Well, you, you don't need to, you have the current, and next month you'll have, you'll revise with our recommendation and the LDRs to go with it, and hopefully there'll be peace in, in River City. Alright, is there anything further to come before the planning commission?
No.
No, not this evening, um, the, the next meeting is, I believe, August fourth.
August fourth.
August the fourth.
August the fourth, and then, uh, I just wanna remind you, eh, tomorrow, there will be the, eh, CRA, redevelopment plan workshop, it will be at, at six fifteen tomorrow night, you know.
Well, I didn't get an email on it, and my calendar is already filled, I don't know who you're notifying for that one.
No, no, that, that, that's, that's just from the CRA, so we are.
I'll, I'll be there.
Yeah, so.
I, I, I did not get.
At the, at the meeting yesterday, so I, I was, uh, reminded to remind you.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm leaving, I'll be back next week.
I'm, I'm already booked.
Yeah, no, but they haven't, but that's for the redevelopment plan, uh, CRA redevelopment plan, I think that's a very important workshop, you know, any of you that can attend, you know, I think.
All okay.
Yeah, and I think they probably start at five.
For those of you that can make it tomorrow, that would be good, I, I, this is new to me, I didn't know about this, so.
I only knew about it, finally, yesterday myself.
You wanna try and do that, before we close, Mr. Prevattel, we, we, we thank you for your wonderful service, I gather you have something you'd like to say, I'll give you the opportunity, sir.
If, if I might, William Prevattel, one, one, nine, five, zero, North Bay Shore Drive, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me, uh, some, a little bit of time to follow up on, uh, the workshop that took place, uh, was it just last week?
The comp plan workshop.
Comp plan workshop, which was with the council and the planning commission and, and the, uh, the general public. At that time, uh, I had proposed twelve points, refashioned something, a, a twelve point program of items that are, some of the items are, uh, extend throughout the entire city.
Sure.
And relate to that, some items refer to districts and some other initiatives, so they were trying to cover a number of bases without over, overstressing or over amplifying the entire city and trying to get these hotspots that could possibly, and other opportunities for the city. I just wanted to touch on a, a couple of them in particular, um, one was just, uh, discussed earlier this evening, uh, which I found of interest with the uh, storage facility, and I, I didn't quite have a site plan in the audience, but I'm not too sure where it is, but it seems like it's going to be about the location of the, uh, the new train station.
It is further south.
Right, well, we don't know exactly where this train station is, and I've, my appeal is to the city and to the, to the panel and such, that the city of North Miami have a stronger hand on where this goes, rather than having somebody from far away who's just at school or whatever and says, you know, well, this is kinda convenient, let us try to dictate that process, let us try to dictate exactly where the train station is best suited for us and a circulation pattern and parking and park space and all the rest, so that it becomes a, you know, a cohesive, a gestalt, uh, end result that we can all be proud of, as opposed to more randomness, which is what we're so used to, and, uh, so we were so accustomed to that, and here it is tonight, even though it was a, a nice presentation, you know, it's more of the auto repairs, more of the self-storage, I, I, I dare not ask who's gonna be using your self-storage, I'm, I'm guessing it's probably Bay Harbor, Bow Harbor, the beach and such, just cheaper to do over here, so they'll dump their stuff over here along with a few of the North Miami residents. But I hope we really make the best of that opportunity, I hope we use as the, as one hundred twenty fifth, one hundred twenty, becomes one hundred twenty third street, crosses the tracks, that really is a nice opportunity. That was one of the last five proposals that I had at the bottom. I, I also want to bring your attention, cause I think it's a little bit urgent, um, that the Winston Water Treatment Plant that we had discussed in, in sessions past, where we are relocating, the city is relocating the two tanks onto what used to be residential lots, now creates a diamond that is now available for redevelopment, and in the plans from Public Works, they were planning on putting, um, the administration there. So therefore, we take this what was a potentially nice diamond shaped park, uh, in an area that has suffered greatly, that neighborhood has suffered greatly because it has been used for just utilitarian purposes, and we're now going to put down this, this, uh, utilitarian kind of building, and you have to cross the street to get to the tanks. So even that didn't quite work so well, but rather than blowing that entire diamond shaped lot, why don't we just relocate this administration building next to the tanks, where we have room for a third tank or possibly take over another house, relocate it there, it works better. It's actually easier to not have to relocate the staff from the existing facility as they tear it down, so it actually, the logistics work a whole lot better, and the end result is that the city salvages, completely salvages a park at basically no extra land acquisition cost. So I'd like to push that because that has already been in the works since being drawn up, and I'd hate for someone to say, oh, because it's already drawn, uh, that all of a sudden we have to build this thing, and it becomes an eyesore for years to come.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I, I'd like to, you know, based on the, uh, what was presented, I, I'd like to, uh, put a stake in the heart of that administrative building, I think it sucks the life out of that neighborhood, it was really nothing to be, uh, proud of, and if, if that's our effort for that type of a building, then let's tuck it in against the tanks and, you know, uh, do that, and we could have really an optimal park there, it could be a first class, um, very green conscious, uh, park that the city could be proud of.
Definitely, thank you.
And, and, and while I'm, I'm, I'm here, since I no longer have sunshine laws, I'd, I'd like to also promote, I, I didn't hear too much, but if we wanna have something on the, on the higher end, I'd like, uh, and I, I can now do this, as I have not for ten years, I'd like to say that why aren't the comp plans, uh, why is there no call for developing on the, on North Bay Shore Drive, on the bay itself, where there are four buildings in a row on about twelve different lots, every one of them is more intensely zoned than what it's called for, and as I had pointed out, Mallorca Tower, which is, you know, about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty feet high and, uh, like a hundred and nineteen units, if they rebuilt that, you can go to, you know, just a fifth of that, doesn't make sense, it's really an opportunity that the city should take advantage of that.
Well, that was something that, uh, we, we clearly addressed with the consultants, and we hope that they will bring us back something meaningful in that regard, uh, in August, so we're, we are aware of that, and we, we made that clear to the consultants in the strongest terms possible.
Okay, which brings me around to, um, uh, our, our city manager and, and Tanya, our manager of community planning development, have this document, I think everybody has it, and I've been instructed by Tanya, we have a meeting coming up next Wednesday with Tanya and the city manager and Nixon, and Tanya had said to, uh, try to work as much of this, essentially, uh, not to put words in the mouth, but try to work out some of these details with you in advance, if we can work out getting these things incorporated. And my, I wanted, what I wanted to sort of acknowledge here is, I don't think anybody came up with some, uh, saw that any of these proposals were detrimental to the city or prohibitive or somehow abusive, and in light of the fact that that has not come out, there's not been a backlash against this, and most of them are innocuous would be the word, right, um, didn't cause much harm and could possibly do very good for the city, I'd like us to be able to promote those and, and put them in the plan.
Are we able to, are we able to, do we know if our consultant has, has for sure a copy of that?
They, they have a copy of it, and then some of, uh, the points were already addressed, and some of the policy, and then that's why, you know, when we sit down with Mr. Prevattel, and we, and then, uh, and then, you know, and to, to this date, you know, we have not received them, cause, uh, the scope of, uh, of, of work was amended, and then just signed on this very morning by the city manager, so the consultant is now working, cause, you know, they have to get paid, cause every time we change the scope of work, that would trigger, you know.
Okay, but this, but some of these things were not new, they've been, they've been floated out there for many months.
No, no, I mean, but, but, but i- if you read even, uh, for your property now, eh, on the non-conforming user, at the very beginning, some of those, oh, we have beef up in the policy in the complaint to address those very concerns that you mentioned, and then we understand, we understand that this whole country, not the city of North Miami, was built on property rights, so we understand that, and then, you know, our job is not taking away anybody's property rights, and I think we should work with everybody, and then some of the, and then we, eh, what was, uh, directed to the consultant, you know, by both the planning commission and the city council, and to look at, you know, those very corridors where we can increase the height and density, and North Bay Shore Drive was one of the eh, streets, you know, that was mentioned, that were mentioned, you know, as, you know, a place where we can increase height and, and.
But things keep on getting mentioned, but you never, we never see it reflected.
No, but, but the consultant have not submitted anything yet, so they're still working.
It wasn't advertised, so we just started.
Right, okay, well, I, I guess that sort of finalizes what I was trying to say, I, uh, wish to express continued support for the planning commission, which I admire so much, uh, all of you up there, and a special shout out here to our acting city attorney, interim city attorney. I think, I, I, I hope they're, I hope they're doubling your salary for taking on all this extra work.
You should be so lucky.
I, I, I hope there's some acknowledgement, some recognition of that, cause Roland, you do a fantastic job all the time, thank you all.
Thank you very much, Bill, alright, ladies and gentlemen, if there's nothing further before us, commission, that's August the fourth, right?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Bill.